Welcome to our first school committee meeting of the 2022-2023 school year, or just ahead of when the school year will be beginning next week after Labor Day. We have a shorter than usual agenda. Uh, so why don't we just jump right in? The first item is administrative business consent agenda, past records for July 26th, school committee meeting and the July 26th, school committee workshop. Would someone like to move those minutes? Thank you, Nancy. Is there a second?
Also.
Thank you, Helen. All right, Andy, your vote?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
See who else we have here?
Me, yes.
No, Helen votes yes, and I vote yes. Oh, I see Stephen as well. We're voting on the minutes for July 26th.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to acceptance of funds to establish the Barbara Callen Scholarship.
David, did you want to do these items all together, the remaining items?
Uh, yes, we could do that. All right, so for items two through seven.
Well, yeah, it might be an idea. I mean, I think we can do the uh, the construction ones all together, but I have a couple of questions about the other two, just. So on the Barbara Callen Scholarship, can you tell us a little bit about them? I don't think we got anything, did we?
Dr. Gill, would like to address the scholarship?
Hi, mine, um, Robin, was that something that came directly through you, or did it come through our team?
Yes, I think that there is a document that's in the folders.
The folder, okay.
Holder, yep.
All right. Um, take a look at it, I guess. Okay, how much is it for?
Sorry, I just found it. Um, so it's $2,500 and it's to be provided to a BHS senior who lives in Brookline Public Housing that exhibits strong work ethic, empathy, and unmet financial need. And this is in honor of Barbara Callen, and I think um, her, her family and friends had donated the funds for this.
Is it one time?
I don't think so. I think it's more than one time.
Great. Okay, I'll move it.
All right, so thank you, Helen. Is there a second? Thank you, Nancy. Uh, Andy, your vote?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. All right, so that brings us to approval of field trips. Lawrence School, seventh grade, uh, November 7th to November 8th, and November 8th to November 9th.
Can we get a little more detail on that field trip?
My understanding.
Go ahead.
My understanding is this is an annual field trip that the Lawrence School typically goes on. Suzanne, I think you have more details on this?
Well, I just know that my, my own kids went to it, you know, years ago, when they were at Pierce. It's an annual event. Uh, you, there's a whole program. You spend the night, uh, you work on the farm. Uh, there's animals and crops and all of that. Uh, it's, it's a lot of fun for the kids. I, I thought maybe they spent more than one night, but I think this proposal has it for two nights, but two different groups of students.
So this is to the farm school?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that wasn't clear. I wasn't sure what they were going to.
That's my understanding, Helen. I think it's the farm school. It's an Ethel. That's where the farm school is.
Yep.
Yeah, Leslie says yes, it's the farm school.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it's a great program, yeah.
All right, so would someone like to move approval of the field trips?
I'll move this one.
Okay, go ahead, Helen.
Thank you, Helen. Sounds like Suzanne seconds.
Sure.
Andy, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Helen?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Nancy?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, and I also vote yes. Now following on Helen's suggestions, lump together the construction-related items on the consent agenda. Would someone like to move uh, four through seven?
I'll move it.
And is there a second? Thank you, Helen. Andy, your vote?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So that brings us to 2022-2023 school year updates. Dr. Guillory?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, Erin, are you gonna share for us?
Oh, sure, I can.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're just gonna bring up a slide presentation to walk us through. We have various members of our leadership team here to uh, share with you. Um, and I also um, well, we'll get to it when we get to that point. So for our opening of school, we, the senior team has been busy uh, these past two days, uh, Wednesday and Thursday, going around to each of the schools, greeting the faculty and staff uh, for their annual, what I would consider a convocation, but it's a staff meeting where we give uh, welcomes or greetings to all of our staff members. So we've had a a whirlwind day Wednesday. We visited six schools and today we visited the final four. So we're so appreciative of that. We're gonna walk through a few items for you tonight. Some uh, staffing updates that we'll get to more deeply in the next committee meeting on the 15th. Uh, but we'll also talk about sort of where we are as a community, some calendar pieces, facilities updates, uh, health protocols, and enrollment update, um, as well as statewide changes to the high school MCAS requirements. So as far as our staffing updates, we have schools that are presently work, continuing to work through their staffing needs, um, as well as filling some open positions. Um, so we uh, in need, so those in the listening audience, uh, if you're interested in becoming a para educator, um, as well as um, some of our schools are still needing some, uh, need of some teachers or long-term subs. We ask you to check out our human resources website or reach out directly to the schools. We want to take this opportunity to welcome uh, 10 new educational leaders to our community. And as I said, you'll meet them next um, on the 15th at that committee meeting. Malcolm Carthon has accepted the position of Metco Director. Uh, Rachel Cragan is going to serve as an interim BEEP Coordinator. Margaret Everhart, uh, as you know, is going to serve as our interim BEEP Principal. Dominique Ferdinand has been um, promoted to Vice Principal at Lawrence School. Uh, Allison Henry is the new Vice Principal at Baker School. Hey Young Coe is our new Assistant Director for Educational Equity. David Linder is an interim Vice Principal at Lawrence School. Lisa O'Connell is our new interim Deputy Superintendent for Student Services. Dr. Ida Ramos is our Director, New Director of Special Education at BHS. And Kyle Williams is our new Athletic Director at BHS. So again, we look forward to having all of these new leaders join us at the September 15th meeting for their formal introduction to the school community, but we did want to take uh, time to acknowledge them. Also, PSB welcomed um, over 80 new educators and staff at the New Educator Orientation Days, uh, October 25th, 6th, and the 29th. And all of our teachers and para professionals returned to school on the 31st. So um, busy, busy preparations right now for an exciting school year. And so we're certainly looking forward to our launch next week. Um, here are some shots. I think this is uh, at the, this is FRR, right? FRR, this is um, I'd think Janay and Hey Young um, doing a staff orientation um, for the folks at FRR, for our new educators. And then we also had our nearly 80 district leaders uh, at Boston University for our annual uh, meeting there. So lots of great work, uh, and excitement as we come into the new year. Uh, and then certainly, as I shared with you, we were moving around the district both Wednesday and Thursday for our staff welcome back sessions. And so again, lots of excitement and energy for the new year. Um, for our calendar updates, Monday is a holiday, so all PSB offices are closed. Tuesday, September 6th is the first day of school, K-12, and remember that our kindergartners have a split schedule, students in grades, um, students including grades 10 through 12 should arrive by 7:50. So we want to make sure that we are promoting on-time arrival. Um, and our kindergartners have a split assignment, uh, either Tuesday or Thursday. And uh, for this year, our BEEP uh, group will start on Wednesday, September 7th. Helen, I see your hand.
Yeah, I have a quick question. We used to have the ninth graders come back a day before or the first day of school alone to go through, but we're not doing that anymore?
I think because they're housed in Aaron, Aaron or Leslie can correct me on this. I think because they're primarily domiciled at the 22 Tappan, uh, that was a shift that occurred this year, so.
Okay, no, it makes sense. That makes sense. Yeah, I'm just curious. Okay, great.
So, and again, Wednesday is the first day for BEEP. And then for our facilities update tonight, we have um, Matt Gillis, our Director of Operations, that's gonna talk a little bit about our facilities, and I believe at some point um, Hal, if he hasn't joined us already, may be joining us to talk a little bit about the high school. And if he's not here, I think Helen and Matt, you all can give an update on, on the status of the high school. So I'm gonna pass the mic over to Matt.
Thank you, Dr. Guillory. Good evening, everybody. Um, the schools are almost ready. There's always finishing touches. Uh, this was a Baker School this morning, one of the classrooms, and one of the teachers uh, getting ready. Um, that, you know, several buildings that I was in today all looked great. Um, I've gotten good feedback from the principals that I've talked to, staff, and a custodial supervisor, uh, Ed Clancy, who's been here 34 years and is uh, pretty happy. Says this might be our, our, our best opening uh, yet that he has seen. Um, uh, you know, the high school's also looking good. Hal Mason is here, and um, you know, I will, I will turn it over to him, but we will be in a, in a moment, we, we will be offering pretty much all the same enhancements that we offered to get through the pandemic. Um, disinfectant would be available on request, but the custodians will be putting out um, last minute, the same way they, they had last year in all the classrooms. Uh, hand sanitizer, Suprox, which is a peroxide-based neutral cleaner that if anybody touches, it's not gonna hurt them. That's what we've used to kind of surface clean the areas, paper towels and hand soap, the portable HEPA filters. Uh, pretty much all been changed. There's over a thousand rooms with them in the school system, so if, if, if a light does come on, we do have spare units and the teachers can uh, get a replacement request the same way they have in the past by contacting their school custodian or using an online um, in-house request form. Um, all in all, I think we're in really good shape. Um, I'd like to thank our custodians. And from one teacher who remained nameless, she said she was so happy with the place she was going around barefoot, but you know, um, we're, we're gonna keep her name, uh, you know, private, and, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna discuss that, but uh, it's nice to get good feedback like that from the staff um, with the work the custodians and the uh, the cleaning vendor put in o- over the summer to get us ready for uh, day one.
Thank you, Matt, for your leadership of that group. If you'll go back one more, one, just a sec. Matt, will you also talk about the ventilation?
So the, the ventilation system will still be the same, um, and you know, I understand that it would be a concern for some folks, so the portable HEPA filters that are in the classrooms, um, uh, are, are still there with, with, with clean filters, the, the mechanical systems, the unit ventilators and, or the, or the uh, rooftop units that feed the air in and out of the buildings, that those will still be running at, at the higher ends and with the improved filtration system. And just like you see here in this classroom, if you got windows, feel free to open them. Um, we understand not all the teachers feel the need to have the portable HEPA filter on all the time, and while the weather is nice, by all means, open the window. Um, any additional airflow is always good to um, uh, to, to keep the space in, in, um, nice clean conditions. I mean, through all the aggravation of the pandemic, you know, we, we learned a few things that we're gonna, you know, continue to practice with clean air and clean hands. You know, and uh, doesn't say it here, but we're still a mask-friendly environment. Th- those signs are up. Most people still have them. And we have a, a few more, just in case anybody has, has run out, that, that should be up by Tuesday. So if folks still want to wear a mask, we, we can provide backups and um, you know, i- in Brookline, we're still happy to, to have you with or without a mask.
Linus, could I just take a tag on to what Matt was saying, because I had the opportunity to go over to the high school this afternoon. It was so clean, my mother would have been proud. It looked fantastic, um, you know, and I, I really think our custodians, um, we should really be uh, congratulating them on how beautiful it looked. I don't remember it ever looking that nice, so.
Thank you for that. Um, Hal, we're gonna pass the mic to you to give some updates from the high school, but before you do that, could you clarify the high school student arrival times for Tuesday for us?
Sure, ninth grade's gonna arrive at eight o'clock to assemble on Greeno Street, and the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade will arrive at 10 o'clock uh, and head directly to advisory.
All right, so we'll make sure we get our slides corrected um, to reflect that as well, and make sure that that messaging is, is out there as well. Thank you, Hal. Could you give us an update on their facility situation?
Just like to clarify, when Helen is complimenting the clinicians in the school, she was not referring to my office, unfortunately. But one of these days.
Wasn't gonna talk about that.
We're not gonna talk about it. We won't talk about that, no. Um, so the high school looks great. And you know, thanks to the foresight of the committee and the town and town meeting, we have an amazing facility. We had a wonderful staff meeting over 22 Tappan today. The building looks fantastic. We have a, a STEM building that's tremendous and a shining example of what a science, uh, science classroom, STEM classrooms can be. Uh, and as you know, the work continues. It's the less glamorous work, you know, people aren't calling me up to tour the renovated old science rooms. They wanna see 22, they wanna see the STEM. But just as important to the everyday life of the school are the renovated rooms on the third floor. And you know, the, it was a, a tall order for, uh, to get the work done over the summer. We knew it was gonna be tight, and in fact, right from the beginning, uh, it was very clear, and the job was bid out as a double-shift job, and the, the reality was we couldn't get, the, the, the contractors could not get the workpeople to do it. Not by anybody's fault, not for not trying, not for lack of money, simply because that's the market that we're in. The market we're in just does not have people available to do the type of double-shift work that the job required. So this is both on the third floor, where again, all of the science rooms used to be, that now have been relocated, some of the physics rooms relocated, of course, to 22 Tappan. This bio and chemistry uh, labs and rooms located over in the STEM, all of those rooms, which were very tired. Um, a- as we observed this afternoon, as we were walking around, you know, these rooms were not renovated. These were the only rooms that were not renovated in the late 90s renovation. They had been done in the late 80s in a different renovation, and therefore the tiles and the floors and some of the cabinetry had not gotten the refreshing that many of my other rooms got in the late 90s. And so the um, updating of that wing was sorely needed, and it looks spectacular. It just isn't quite done. So it's, you know, several weeks behind where it should have been. We should have been, you know, uh, finished with everything at the beginning of last week, let's say. Instead, at this point, we have now pushed the uh, opening of that wing. We now have a, a, we're hoping to get the temporary certificate of occupancy in the middle of next week, and that will allow everything else to fall into place so that we can occupy those rooms uh, at the beginning of the following week. That would be on Monday, the 12th. The, the wing looks great. The, uh, you know, the design was terrific, the, the quality, the workmanship is, is terrific. It just needed a little bit more time to get that done, and the quad, which also uh, needed desperately to have work done and, and received some pretty significant damage over the course of the construction of the STEM wing and, and the uh, you know, all the work that happened over the last two years, that also is for the same reason. Strictly about getting skilled trade people in to do the work. Uh, and uh, because of that is also delayed. That's likely to be delayed for, I, I believe the estimate now would be the end of October at the best. But we'll have a working high school, even with that wing closed off for one week. We have everybody seated in a classroom. Everybody will have a room that has a working whiteboard, internet connectivity, Wi-Fi, everything. Uh, and we hope that within a, within a week, possibly longer, but within a short period of time, everybody will be in their own classroom, in, in their classroom, not necessarily their own classrooms, uh, and, and set for the rest of the year, and the quad will fall into place, you know, within a few months after that.
Helen?
I can't, I was talking on mute. Uh, first of all, I think we, it, Hal, we can't thank you enough for what you have managed to do with this project and how you've managed to, so, and what he said made it sound very simple to put all these classrooms and kids in different places in the school. This is after he'd already done the, the full schedule. Everybody was assigned spaces. This is a logistical nightmare that Hal made happen, so I think we really need to give you a huge applause.
I just added it to my list of jigsaw puzzles for the summer, so it was one additional jigsaw puzzle to do.
I think you're a logistics maven, totally. Um, I, I had the pleasure of also um, going up there and seeing it today. There, there were, spaces are beautiful. And they're, they're, you know, they're gonna be wonderful spaces in terms of teaching and for the, the classrooms that, that key teachers will have. Um, I, I just, we need to get it done, and that, no, the contractor needs to get it done, and we need to, you know, and I will commit myself, along with Susan, who has done yeoman's job on making this project move along. I mean, we all know how Susan can, can really help things move along. Um, she has worked her, worked very hard to make this happen.
No, you know, it's not for anybody not working hard on this, and you know, the co-chairs have been terrific, and the, the people from the town side, from the building department have been great. Uh, Matt's office, you know, hats off to Matt and Karen King, tremendous amount of work that they're doing to make this project uh, happen, and in all the phases of this uh, project. None of this happens without that coordinated effort, and, and you know, the contractor's been trying really hard just, you know, running up against a few problems. There have been supply chain issues as, as we've seen on all the projects around town. And the, you know, getting the workpeople in to do the work has, has been a problem. So it's, it's gonna be terrific space. It's just gonna be a little bit longer.
And I'm hoping that the OPM can put together the schedule of what needs still to be done so that we have a, a roadmap to how we're getting there.
Yeah, I agree. This is, this is really important that we have that, because we, we, you know, we wanna put people in rooms that have working clocks and working Wi-Fi and working lights, and you know, where the, where the door closes properly and the lock is the right lock, so I don't have to scramble around and find keys. We want all of those little detail things that go far beyond, you know, the, the scale of, oh, did we, did we pass an electrical inspection? You know, that's one thing, but that's, whether or not they passed an electrical inspection is not important to the teacher. I mean, it's important to everyone. But it's not important to the teacher. The teacher wants to know, will the key that I have in my hand open this door? And when I plug in my laptop, is it gonna illuminate the screen uh, in the front of the room? And all of those extra things are what we're buttoning up over the, certainly over the course of the next week uh, to 10 days as we get ready to move into that space.
And, and Matt and Karen King also should be commended for all the hard work that you've done over the summer to keep these projects moving, to get the buildings ready. Um, you know, the, it, it takes a good boss to make custodians really, you know, do what we've seen they've done, and it looks beautiful. So thank you, Matt.
You're, you're welcome. I, I guess I'd like to thank, you know, the staff who in the springtime, when we were really shorthanded on custodians because of people leaving for one reason or another, um, you know, we, we were in the transition and hiring process phase, because you know, sometimes when people leave, it takes a little while before you can fill the position, as we all know. We were pretty, pretty close to fully staffed this summer, and we hadn't been in a while, and it, 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 it really sort of made it a difference. Um, you know, what the staff not feeling is, is burnt out, and, and I haven't counted days, but maybe we did have a, a few more days uh, to get things done this summer than we did in some other summers. So um, thank you for everybody's patience and support.
Next, uh, we'll have an update on our um, anti, our health protocols, and Lisa O'Connell will be walking us through those.
Hello, everybody. It's good to see you. Uh, Tricia Leaham, our Nurse Director, wasn't able to be here this evening, so she and I met today, and I am here to, to walk us through the protocol. Um, this slide basically articulates, uh, you know, again, as, as Matt pointed out, that BPS is a mask-friendly environment with mask uh, mandatory mask-wearing in the health office. Uh, for those developing symptoms during the school day, testing is available, consent being required. And for those testing positive, isolation for five days is required. Leaving isolation, a high-quality mask is required for the next five days, so days six through 10. Erin, are you clicking through slides? Thank you. Um, getting vaccinated continues to be recommended for all, including children six months to five years of age. Vaccines and boosters remain uh, the frontline defense uh, to protect our in-person learning platform. A vaccine, vaccine clinics are going to be held through the year. The August 24th vaccine clinic was full. It was a success. And the next clinic is scheduled for September 21st. And uh, Ms. Leaham will be disseminating information regarding the September 21st clinic next week, once school begins. Uh, she notes that the district dashboard weekly reporting has been discontinued. So that's where we are to date as we start the school year. Um, Ms. Leaham did highlight uh, the facilities um, and the shout-out to all for uh, how prepared we are as we begin the year.
And Erin, before you, before you give the enrollment update, I recognize that an important slide, and we'll, uh, Robin will update this um, and share it out um, for the community is around security uh, updates. Um, over the summer, we have been meeting um, with the Brookline Police Department to um, engage in training of our building leaders, um, to uh, re- uh, ignite that process as well as coordinated um, trainings for our schools. So that's happening. I know some trainings are taking place this week. We'll continue those. Uh, the Brookline Police Department tested uh, communication systems and those types of things, and one of the uh, ads that we're looking to um, leverage to support our high school campus is an additional security uh, para personnel uh, for the high, for the 22 Tappan building. So there's been a number of, um, we've been updating systems, medical communication processes, reviewing our communications, uh, emergency preparedness plans, and all of those types of things uh, over the summer. So I do want to uh, acknowledge that work and our ongoing partnership um, with the Brookline Police Department. So Erin, I'll pass the mic back to you.
Um, hi, everyone. Um, so the last, um, I saw you, and we talked about enrollment. Um, this slide probably looks fairly familiar to you. We've thought of a handful of times over the course of last school year. Um, I've added an additional bar on the far right-hand side of the graph that outlines how many students we ended the school year with, um, in our pre-K through 12, um, uh, year for the 2021-22 school year. So that's that 7,079 number. So if you're looking at that, for, those four bars on, um, the right-hand side, from the blue to the purple, you can see that you can see that from June 2021, we are slowly increasing our number of students that we have enrolled in the district. And here are some information about our kindergarten registration. All of these numbers for this upcoming school year, 22, 23, are as of August 23rd. So last week, our team has spent a lot of time this week, as you can imagine, getting families ready and prepared for enrollment, especially those who have September 1 leases that begin. So you can just see here how our numbers of kindergarten students registered compared to the number of students that were actually enrolled by October 1 pans out over the course of the last four or five school years. As of August 23rd, we had 503 kindergarten students registered with 30 additional students who had submitted applications for this upcoming school year but haven't yet gone through or didn't at the time of August 23rd yet go through the entire enrollment process. So we're back up over that 500 number and anticipate being, you know, closer to the 540, 550 range of kindergarten students for this upcoming school year. And here's a look at our entire population broken out by our grade span. Again, this is as of August 23rd. We had 6,950 students that have gone through the entire registration process or, you know, cycled through from last year into the new school year. That first bullet point on the right, that's 197 additional students who have submitted application but didn't go through the entire process yet, right? So that's almost 200 additional students that you could add to that 6950 that will enter our buildings at the beginning of the school year next week. Some other things that we wanted to note for you, you can see the different countries across internationally, across the globe, where we're seeing some families register from. And we've also had some re-enrollment, so approximately 60 students who previously left PSP at some point are now re-registering with us. So that's some good news as well. Do you want me to pause for questions, Linus, or am I gonna go right through?
Are there any questions on enrollment for, for Erin? So you wanna switch gears and go to MKS?
Yeah, actually, just a quick question, Erin. Sorry if you said this. So the 6950, when did we last at that level?
Oh, um, well, during the pandemic year, we were at 68. Or no, that, that was last year. We were, sorry, let's just go back. So I have the actual numbers. So right, October 2020 was the 6891. And then June 2021, 6829. So we're, we're moving, you know, forward. We're certainly not, you know, recouping the 7, 800 students that we lost in the pandemic yet, but, you know, certainly increasing.
Any, any outgoing forecasts on the extent to which we're going to recover further? Are we still gonna be down at school, do you think? But if everything continues as is, or is that too crystal?
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't even want to do those numbers until we have the actual, like, October 1 enrollment so that we can, you know, put it through the same projection methodology that we did last year.
Okay, thanks, Erin.
Mariah? Mike, I was just trying to find, what did we end up? What was our mid-range forecast? It was around 7250. Am I remembering right?
Yes, 7219, I think. So I do think we'll be pretty close to that and around October 1.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thanks, Erin. I'm just curious, does the 60 students who are re-enrolling, is that included in the 6950 total?
Yes.
And do we have any sense of the grade levels or who those students are?
A variety of grade levels.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Helen? Oh, you're on mute, Helen.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions following up on what Suzanne asked. Are these students who were in private school who are coming back?
So I don't have that in front of me, but we could certainly get that information, yeah.
It would be interesting to know how this, you know, because 60 is a, we usually get kids come back at the high school level. I don't know if these are mostly high school students or?
No, it's a mix. And certainly Megan can provide that information.
Yeah, I think that would be interesting to, to know and to, in terms of planning and thinking through. Also, with the increase in enrollment, has you've seen it different in different schools? Or is it the same across the board?
Yeah, it's hard to say. You know, we have some areas of the city that are a little bit more densely populated, right? And so those areas, especially those that have leases around the September 1 time period, we're seeing a little bit more of an increase there, but nothing, you know, drastic that would lead to, in my opinion, any changes to how, you know, we've decided to staff for the upcoming year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna just quickly walk you through some slight changes that the State Board of Education made or voted on on August 15th to the high school MKS requirement. So that's the requirement of competency determination. You have to either pass the MKS and/or pass an educational proficiency plan in order to get your diploma for high school. So the Board of Education vote, voted a new passing standard for the competency determination for ELA, math and science. This will begin with our incoming freshmen, so the class of 2026. And they also voted on some enhancements to the EPP process, which is that educational proficiency plan process for students who don't meet the cut score to pass the ELA or math MKS. You can get, you can reach a certain score and then be put on an ed proficiency plan or an EPP plan and meet the graduation requirement that way. So there's kind of two ways that you can meet this competency determination for graduation. And their rationale for this vote really was, you'll probably remember, a year or two ago, the high school test transition to the next generation MKS assessment. Our three through eight students had that a handful of years ago. So we transitioned to high school there. And the current quote passing score was actually equivalent to a performance level of not meeting expectations. So the state is just increasing the cut score so that, you know, in order to graduate, you're at, or students are at more of a level akin to meeting expectations or meeting grade level expectations. And then they also ran a study done by Educational Opportunity in Massachusetts, which is a research-based practice partnership between Brown and Harvard that really showed students who were scoring in the not-meeting-expectations level were not prepared well for post-secondary success. So that's a second reason why they decided to make this vote or this change. And I did give Robin some documents so that you can actually see what the board did vote on. So this is kind of a shorter version of that. Like I said, there's two ways that students can meet their competency determination for graduation. One is by passing the ELA in math and science MKS. And then the other is if they don't pass but meet a certain scaled score, students can opt into having an educational proficiency plan and submit their materials that way. So if we're looking at what's required for the EPP, so current students who are in grades 10 through 12 need to get a scaled score of 455 in English and 469 in math to be eligible to have an EPP. If they were to pass the MKS, you know, they, you know, don't need their EPP. You can see that score there, 472 and 486 in the current version where EPP isn't required in green. So you're either, students are either passing in grades 10 through 12 with a 472 or a 486 in math or they're reaching the 455 and 469 and doing this educational proficiency plan. Now for our students who are entering ninth grade this year, so the class of 2026, that cutoff for the educational proficiency plan has increased to 470. And then the cutoff to pass the assessment without doing the EPP plan is 486 for both ELA and math. And then underneath that table, I just have some information about some of the enhancements that the board voted on when students are completing an EPP that you can read and is also in your materials. And just so we have some idea of what this means for our students in particular, the spring 2022 assessment results are not out yet. We actually don't have access to scaled scores, performance levels, et cetera, yet. So these results are from spring 2021. But if you look at the far left here, we had 489 high school students take the ELA test. And 23 of those students did not meet the new 486 cut score for passing. So that's passing without needing a proficiency plan. Only 23 of our 486, I'm sorry, 489 students didn't meet that cut score. Of those 23 students, 20 were high-need students. So high-needs, you'll remember, are students who are either on an IEP, are low-income or EL, or some combination of those three. And for some perspective, six students scored less than 470, which is the new cutoff for an educational proficiency plan. So a small number of students that are not meeting or did not meet the new cut, cut scores in spring 2021. Again, this does not mean that they have to do anything because this doesn't apply to them. It applies to our freshmen moving forward, but I just wanted to give you some perspective. Similar numbers in math, we had 483 test takers. 35 did not meet the new 486 cut scores. 31 of those students were high-need students and only eight students scored less than that 470, which is the new educational proficiency plan cut score. I'm gonna pause. There are questions. And we do, is Hal still on? We don't have a lot of, he must have left. We really don't have a lot of students at VHS who complete the EPP. Most of them, if they do not meet the cut score for passing, they take the test again and they pass the next year. So it's a small number of our students. Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you, Erin. I, I was gonna ask what our numbers would look like because the report is saying that, not your report, but from the state, something like 3,300 students would not pass at this point with the new score. So it looks like our numbers, of course, are much, well, possibly much smaller than that, but even percentage-wise perhaps. Who, can you just talk to me for a minute, Erin, about who puts the EPP together? How, how is that done?
Yeah, so I believe it's a combination of guidance counselors, teachers, parents, guardians.
And do they meet as a team with the student or?
You know, we, we do it so infrequently, I'm actually not sure. Someone at the high school is probably more equipped to answer that question for you.
Okay, thanks. And, you know, of those six students who would currently score less than 470 in ELA and the eight in math, do they not receive a diploma? Is that what?
So they certainly can take the assessment again and try and either get to that 470 or get to the 486 to pass. And then you can take it as many times as, you know, you're enrolled and it's, you know, given. But if they are special education students, for example, there's the alternate assessment that's available. So it really depends on the specific child.
And would the alternative assessment include these students that were, that you listed, I mean, as a number?
I can't remember if they were in the file or not, to be honest.
Okay, okay. And does these numbers include students who might be in a separate placement?
Yes.
Out of district placement?
Yes, because our entire file that we get from the state includes all, like, what else, like Brookline students, so those kids.
Thanks a lot, Erin. I appreciate it.
Sorry to jump in. I just didn't get an answer to Suzanne's question. Can they still get a diploma if they don't take it?
So no, they can get a certificate of graduation. Mariah?
I just wanna register my frustration that we spend this much time talking about MKS, which we know is fundamentally flawed and we issue resolutions against, and then we talk about it. And this has nothing to do with your presentation, just a philosophical point that I cannot slip by that we are, that we're focusing on this as opposed to the underlying issues of student needs.
Helen?
I agree with Mariah. However, I do wanna note that, to the best of my recollection, every year when Anthony and Hal come at the beginning of the year to talk about graduation and students about MKS, they, they do, to the best of my recollection, we've never had a kid who hasn't graduated. They have helped and worked with these students throughout to be able to pass and, and graduate with the rest of their class. Some might need, might have other issues that keep them from graduating, might be an English class or phys ed class, but, and that, you know, in the summer, we always have kids who also graduate then at the end of the summer after they made up those credits. So to the best of my recollection, we, our kids graduate.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to clarify, I'm pretty sure I understand correctly, but I just wanna make sure. It's that the state won't allow us to give a diploma, correct? Is it the state that requires it? Is it that we require it?
Yeah, there are certain graduate, there are local graduation requirements and then there are state graduation requirements and you have to meet both of them.
Thank you. So this in particular is a state requirement and we are not allowed to give a diploma without this state requirement being met. Okay.
Steven, is that an old hand or a new hand?
It's a new hand. I just wanted to say quickly in response to Mariah's comment, right? I think you, you were at the DINJ subcommittee meeting, right? Yeah, so we talked about taking this up as an issue since there are obvious equity consequences of MKS. So I, for one, I'm optimistic that we have a forum to advance some ideas about addressing the root issues with MKS.
Suzanne?
I just wondered if you could talk for a minute about the ACE program, Erin? They, do they do MKS or they have their alternative, their own alternative graduation?
Um, actually, Leslie, do you know the answer to that? I think you have to take MKS in order to get a diploma.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. I am fairly certain they take MKS. I'm 99% certain, so I don't wanna declare that as truth, but I will find that out. But I'm, I'm fairly certain of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I mean, they do, it is an alternative program. So I'm wondering, you know, what leeway they have in terms of putting together a program for graduate, for the students graduating. So I'd be curious to know about that. Thanks.
Even new hand, old hand? Good, okay. I think that's it for me.
All right, thank you very much, Erin. And that leads us to some sad news that involves you, which is that you are departing the public schools of Brookline. We're all going to be very sorry to see you go. And I am told that Leslie would like to give some words.
I would. Thank you so much, Chairperson David Pearlman. I feel so honored to be able to talk about Erin because many of you may not know, but I knew Erin in a past life. We both worked at Boston Public Schools together and I was so thrilled when she came here because I know her skill set and I know what she's capable of. And just, she's such an incredibly hard worker in service of students. I told this story, which is gonna totally embarrass her, but I, I have to tell it every time because it's just the truth. And I told it yesterday when we had a little gathering for her. Her skill level at understanding what are the right data points and how to assemble that data so that people can really understand what the gist of the information is, is like no other. There's a lot of people who can do the analytical parts of the data, but then she's able to take it and really break it down. And I've seen teachers reach out to her. And I've seen teachers reach out to her, asking her for their support. And that support is not just around getting the data, but thinking about next steps, practical next steps that are really going to support students. And, you know, the, I've always known that. But my husband also has worked with Erin and has seen her do incredible things. So, you know, I have to say, when she pops up on our school committee meetings and I'm in one room and he's in the kitchen, he's like, is that Erin? And he always wants to hear what she's saying. So, and that's, he doesn't do that with everyone. So that's huge kudos to Erin, but we're really going to miss her. I think, you know, we don't, I don't need to talk about what we're missing with her departure because you see it here, just how she shared the data. I was actually on a call today about the MCAS changes. And Erin explained it better than the folks on the call did. So, you know, she just has an incredible knack for, for this work. And we're really going to miss her. We're going to miss her presence on the fifth floor. She's such a team player, partnering with OSS, partnering with OTL. And I think one of the things that I've just been impressed with is that, again, I've always known her data sense, but to see the work that she's done with the Office of Enrollment, just on Tuesday, she presented and really supported Matt in our, in talking to our school leaders about attendance policies. So she's just really able to take the data and then put it in a practical sense that is going to help us move the work forward in terms of best supporting our students. So Erin, we're going to miss you and we wish you all the best. We, we are, we hope that you'll stay in touch and you know that I will definitely stay in touch. But again, you will be missed.
Janine?
Thank you. I just wanted to jump in and say, just following up on what Leslie just shared. In addition, Erin, to your brilliance, your incredible smarts on all things data and interpreting and all that, I just want to come behind Leslie and add, you're such a great person, like you are such a good human being. It's awesome to have been able to work with you in this context for the last year. But I definitely knew of you throughout your years here in the district. And to just echo Leslie, principals and your average teacher knew of, of your goodness and willingness just to be able to help, respond to an email, come visit, whatever. But it's been honestly a blessing for me to get to know you on the fifth floor this past year. So excited for you and your next step and your work with your family. And we're definitely going to miss you. So thank you.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to, you know, also, whatever, whatever everyone's been saying, but you know, just say thank you, Erin, for always meeting the needs of the school committee. We often would ask you for data. You came up with it and you asked, and you came back then with the additional data that we asked for, or comments, interpretation. So thank you so much. I also knew Erin back in the Boston days. So I was delighted when I was on the school committee to see that she was a part of our group. And I suspect that our paths will cross again at some point. We're actually kind of a small community here in Boston, in the Boston area. So I wish you all the best, Erin, and you will be missed. Thank you. And take care of those little ones, too. You've done a tremendous job, even while you're expanding your family and doing all that good mothering that you do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mariah?
Thanks. Thanks, Erin, for everything. Erin and I have had the chance to work together on a lot of things over the past couple of years. It's only been two years now I've been on school committee, but it's been really helpful to have someone to be a partner, to think through how to talk about different things and how to present them. And just really grateful for the, the timeliness of the support that you've been able to provide. So best of luck and thanks for everything.
Jennifer?
I just want, I feel like I'm repeating everything everyone's saying, but Erin, thank you so much for all of your hard work. You're just always able to give us the information that we need or come back to us with it. You've just been such a great asset to Brookline schools. And I'm really sad that you're going. And I'm, I'm very happy for you and your new adventure. And I hope that we are able to work together another, in another way, some other time. And I wish you all the best, but thank you so much and I wish you all the best.
Helen?
Yeah, I just want to thank, you know, echo what everybody else has said, Erin. And thank you for all the hard work, especially around the enrollment projections, which in Brookline are next to impossible, as you've pointed out. It has been amazing, you know, what you've been able to do. And I'll tell you, we ask for too much. Sometimes I know that. And, but you, you've really come through and thank you and I wish you luck. And good luck with the, the kids and all. And I'm sorry you're leaving.
Stephen?
I want to chime in too. I, before I was on school committee, I was on that, that committee for educational equity under Ben Lomis. And I remember we were constantly just casting around for an objective, much less an approach. And then one day Erin came in and gave a presentation, just getting straight to the heart of a lot of issues with data. And I remember everyone sort of clustering around you. And I was like, oh, who's that? Like, we have a district that has that position. That's great. And she's doing it. That's great. And I just remember how responsive you were to just me as a random person. I'm like, can you, can you unpack that one for me? So just like from the, from the start, you just, you know, always struck me as a really kind person. And I really appreciate how you've, you know, been so objective and data-driven in your presentations. And it's helped us a lot. So thanks, Erin.
Tacking on to what Stephen just said, I would add that I really appreciate, Erin, how your presentations and the way that you would explain the data, you would make it very digestible for us. That has sometimes been a challenge in other settings, but with you, it was always very clear what was being communicated, what was being conveyed. And we could really get some actionable items from your presentations. So thank you very much for that. Andy?
Yeah, Erin, I just wanted to thank you in particular for being one of the people who was tasked with getting our schools open again in the fall of 2020 at the height of the pandemic. That was immensely stressful. You kept your cool. You worked around the clock and we got our kids back in school. Thank you for that.
Anyone else?
So I'll close it out by saying, again, huge thank you to Erin. I'm going to begin with where Helen left off with when we were looking at the enrollment data at the end. And we were looking at the numbers. And I said, well, Erin showed the numbers, 69, 50, and then the 200 in the queue. And she said, that's 71. She says, you know, that's almost on target with what we projected through the budgeting process. So I know how harrowing that experience has been. So Erin was very pleased to see the connection between the projections, which again, it's always hard to do and the hard work. And then her leadership in developing the budget book and returning that back. It was quite the daunting task. I knew it was a big ask. The timeline was incredibly pressed, but Erin persevered in shepherding the team and getting that pulled together. And just her, her leadership of communications, her leadership of the data team, as well as her leadership of registration has been outstanding. So thank you, Erin, for your service and support to the public schools of Brookline.
Thanks, everyone. You know, you all saw how emotional I was when Casey left. So I definitely will keep this pretty brief. I just want to quickly thank everyone that I've worked with over the past almost six years. I've learned so much and certainly will take all those lessons with me in this next position and beyond. But in particular, I really want to thank the members of my team, our small and mighty OSP team. This is a group of very intelligent, dedicated individuals who really work tirelessly to ensure that, you know, our students are registered, that communication is flowing, that our data systems are working appropriately, that attendance can be taken, that schedules are completed, report cards can be drafted, that we're doing our state and federal reporting on time and accurately. And I do think this crew, this group kind of, you know, aside from me, often sits in the background and doesn't get a lot of credit. But in a lot of ways, like really holds this district together, especially from an operational standpoint. So I just want to urge you to take care of them and continue to advocate for them because they're amazing. And so thank you all.
Thank you, Erin. And we wish you the best of success on your next endeavor. And as others said, please don't be a stranger. You're always welcome back. You know that?
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to our next item, which is new business, or any new business. Seeing none, I am going to.
David, can I just, can I ask a question going back to Linus's initial report out on school opening? I, I've just, I've talked to a few people about security planning for the district. And I realize I know very little about what we're doing for security planning. And given the national trends that are so terrifying, I wonder if you could just give us an overview on what the district is doing without getting obviously into any of the details that might compromise our work.
Sure thing. We shared just a little bit earlier, some of the things that we've been doing this summer is working with the Brookline Police Department, testing our communication system. We've also updated, and this is again, one of the projects that Erin just worked on, actually updating our medical emergency response plans. We've gotten all of those submitted into DESI. We've tested out our broadcasting systems with the police department. We've reignited our trainings, our safety plan trainings with the schools in partnership with the Brookline Police Department, as well as looking at 22 tap and specifically what additional security personnel's, personnel we can add there. So many of the enhancements that we have are currently in place, certainly at our K8s, the buzz-in system and those types of things will, will remain. And we'll also make sure we're taking care of, making sure doors are secure and maintaining high visibility and those types of things. So that's as broad and big and as I'd like to be on this matter. But it will be an ongoing process and we'll continuously work with both fire, police, as well as making sure our staff have the information that they need.
If, if community members want to learn more about security planning in the district, is there any resource or place that you would direct people?
Let me get back on that.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't a lot of it, though, that we're not talking about it? So what would you imagine, Stephen, like, just out of curiosity?
I don't know. I don't know. I, I am, it seems to me reasonable that people should have access to some basic layer of information, but I'm not versed in what that security, all my security training has been for conflict zones, not for active shooter drills. So I don't know what there should be available.
I think to some extent, people might just want reassurance that there is some kind of plan in place and that actions are being taken so that we would know how to respond in the event of an emergency. But at the same time, it's a tricky balance because of course you don't want to forecast for all to see exactly how you would respond. Nancy?
I don't know that, I think, I concur with Stephen. I don't think that it has to be an alarming active shooter training. This is something I've been sort of pushing and a drum up and banging for a while in that I think it could just be sort of training in, to the, to the community, both students and, and parents and teachers and on, you know, what to do in the event of an emergency. It's kind of, you know, bystander training instead of necessarily active shooter. It's, it should be something like what to do in order to, in the event of an emergency, whether or not it's scaffolding that falls down or something even horrible, you know, even more, or more horrible than that even, in order to prepare for first responders to come. I think that that could be something that, you know, and some general training around that would be, I think, really welcome within the community. How do we get that into this, you know? I don't know if it's a TED Talk or, not a TED Talk, I'm sorry. Something to the PTOs or, or, or something to that, to that effect. I think it could be something that would be really good to bring the community together, too. And that's kind of my little five-minute or five-second new business, new business agenda. Sorry. Go ahead. And that's it.
All right, any other new business? All right, seeing none, I am going to move that we meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, specifically a demand from Attorney Keith received in the afternoon of August 31st regarding wage claims under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 149, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating possession of the school committee and the chair so declares. For purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, Maimonides School, Two Clark Road, Brookline, Massachusetts, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. And for purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the following meetings, July 21st and July 26, 2022. Is there a second? Thank you, Andy. Helen, your vote?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So we are going to be staying here. We're going to lock this Zoom session and continue momentarily once we make sure it's locked and we have all the right people.